Good afternoon, everybody. Lots of people waiting for this to get started. Scott, you've got a huge fan base of people waiting, listen to what you've got to say. So we're still a minute or two ahead of the hour, so we're going to give a couple of minutes for everybody to get in and get settled. Please feel free to jump into the chat and tell us what branch you are logging in from today. On this beautiful snowy Sunday, sunny Tuesday afternoon, Sunday, Tuesday, Sunday.
All the days are blending. There's no such thing as a weekend anymore.
Except my kid went back to school yesterday, Scott. So we've been, we've been celebrating in our household, having my kid back in school this week.
Yeah, us too.
Oh, you went back to school this week too?
Yeah, my wife's actually a teacher in Peel. So Peel has not gone back, but our kids go to Halton, in Halton. So our kids went back, but my wife is also home, which is great.
That's wonderful. Okay, it looks like we're good and we're at the top of the hour. There's still some people coming in. Lots of people from all of our branches. So Scott, you know that our brokerage spans all across, basically, West GTA. From downtown Toronto, we've got an office at our Johnson and Daniel office is on Mount Pleasant. And then we've got an office on 55 St. Clair and another one at Young and York Mills. And then we've got a whole bunch of other branches and agent codes in between there, all the way out to our westernmost office, which is the Glen Abbey office and two other offices in Oakville, two in Mississauga and two in West Toronto, Atobaco area. So it looks like we've got a pretty good spread from everybody around our entire brokerage, which is always lovely to see. That's the great thing I think about Zoom is bringing everybody together in one convenient location, being our own living rooms, which is wonderful. So without further ado, I'm going to hand the torch of Zoom speaking over to my, my good friend Scott. I'm so excited to have Scott here to speak with you guys today. You know, we, I get a lot of questions in the professional development department from a lot of our Realtors saying, what do I need to do for my listing marketing? And what do I need to do for my personal brand marketing? And how do I shift to be more into a virtual dynamic? And Scott, I think one of the confusions that Realtors have is not necessarily knowing what the competition is doing. So when I wrote the blurb to promote this session that we were having you on, I said, gone are the days when 20 high-res photos were enough for your listing marketing. And you know, just having sort of one of those awkward barstool headshots, you know, being the, the only thing that you could do for your own personal marketing. And the, the industry of marketing has just exploded over the last number of years. And then the shift to a more virtual environment due to the pandemic, of course, is even more rampant than ever before. And because a lot of us are sort of, you know, prevented from really being able to explore and see what houses look like and what the marketing is, and we're all kind of, you know, stuck in our shells, I thought it would be really great to bring you in and talk a little bit about what a fantastic and if I may say, out of the box thinker, in terms of a marketing company like yourselves, are able to bring to Realtors to sort of give an idea of what the competition is doing and what is available to our Realtors to do better in their personal branding and their listing branding. So with that being said, without further ado, no further introduction needed. I'm going to hand it off to Scott and he's going to show us all the cool things that are available for your real estate marketing moving forward. So Scott, welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandra. And thanks, everybody, for, for joining this call today. It's a, it's a real pleasure of mine to be here and hoping that I can provide at least a couple of nuggets of insight for you of certain things that we're seeing happening within the real estate marketing industry. We're, we're really excited to be on this call today. So and it's great to see so many familiar people. I know a lot of our, our clients are on this call. So nice to see you. Thank you again for, for joining the call today. Just as a quick introduction, as Sandra said, my name is Scott Hur and I'm the founder and CEO of company called OTB X, which stands for outside the box. We got our start in 2016. We're based, we have a head office in Oakville, but service the greater Toronto area and all of the markets that you just outlined, Sandra, and beyond. So we stretched down to Kitchener, out east past, past Oshawa and Durham. We go up as far north as Barry, Collingwood, do some servicing in the Muskogas. And then all the way out west, we push out every day into Kitchener, Waterloo, sometimes find ourselves in London. We recently just opened two new divisions within OTB X in the past year. One is an operation in Boston. So we have our first operation in the US, which is really exciting and actually provides a lot of insight for us too about the state of kind of what's going on between the two markets. So if there's something that I can share today, it's a little bit about what do we actually see happening? It's a bit different in Toronto compared to what's happening in another state in which we operate. And we also just opened the doors in Calgary as well. So we're really excited to be expanding our footprint across Canada and the US. We have plans to be in Vancouver and Ottawa, hopefully by the end of March this year. So we've got a pretty aggressive sort of growth plan onboard. And as the description says, and as Sandra introduced, you know, we really specialize in providing a lot of visual marketing services for our clients. We have four core values, which you can see listed on the screen here, speed, quality, creativity, and simplicity, which really are, I think, all important to agents. And they should be important to you, whether you work with us or not. I mean, obviously, we know the fast-paced nature of real estate. I mean, it's, it is a game of speed in many cases, especially in a market like today, where, you know, sometimes we've got to get photos back right away in order to get on the market, because sometimes it'll sell like right now, we're in a case where stuff's selling sometimes without the photos, which is very interesting. Quality obviously needs to be there. And then making it simple for our agents and people, even for your client on the seller's side, too. We have simple processes when it comes to booking, showing up on time, getting what we need on the first pass, not having to come back a second time in an ideal world. And then lastly, creative. I think the creative is really where we're seeing sort of a, a change right now. The biggest change is in sort of that creative, innovative kind of thinking for the coming year. So as I mentioned, you know, we, we provide a lot of services. And I don't want this to be really a pitch for us. I mean, at the end of the day, we can't really avoid it. I just want you to know kind of the foundation of what we do and kind of how, who we are and what, what, you know, how we operate. So hopefully this gives you a little bit of a better insight. But we really specialize in the real estate marketing industry. We, we have been around since 2016. We do everything on the listing marketing side from photos, video, 360. We do drone work. We do a lot of virtual staging. We don't do physical staging, but we do a lot of virtual. We help our agents creating, you know, their floor plans. And then we really can also get into helping the agent or teams with their own marketing as well. So we know what marketing the listing is one thing, but also marketing yourself or your team and your brand is equally as important, sometimes even more. So we do a lot of work there. And then recently, we've also expanded our business to provide more digital marketing solutions, because what we recognize is happening is a lot of cases, we would create great content for our clients. We'd help them produce an awesome video, maybe a neighborhood video, or some social content. And then we're watching kind of how the content's being distributed and we're realizing, like, agents need a lot of help. They don't know what to do when it comes to how, where do I put it, you know, should I run Facebook ads? Should I run YouTube ads? What should I be doing? And so it's taken three years to get there, but we've decided to make a full division within OTB X that is solely focused on sort of the distribution of the content to really pull the whole thing together for our clients to provide this one-stop solution. So we're very much involved when it comes to planning marketing strategy for our clients, but also right down to doing the actual content creation and listing work as well. So we really, when we say it's kind of everything that a Realtor needs all in one place, that is very much the case. In today's presentation, Sandra had asked me to spend a bit of time providing some insights of kind of what's going on out there. And I wanted to just kind of highlight for you some of the things, the talking points to be covering in today's presentation. So first, wanted to kind of give a kind of a quick state of real estate marketing. I know quite often in these meetings, you'll hear sort of the state of what's going on in real estate, but I want to focus a little bit more on the marketing side specifically. I want to talk a little bit about what's going on in video. We're going to talk a little bit about some content ideas for you, how to market your listings right, what you could or should be doing now. I also want to take you a little bit through just kind of a broad discussion around the customer journey, what's kind of happening in the social and digital landscape, current trends that are happening. We'll talk a little bit about marketing strategy and sort of a snapshot of what's going on in your own business as well. So a few things, hopefully, again, you've got, you'll get some value out of something that we shared today. So the first thing, if we were to look at sort of the current state of real estate marketing in the greater Toronto area specifically, we're in a very, very interesting time, as you know. First of all, we've got a lot of unknowns with COVID that are kind of, you know, at one, in one breath, we don't know whether we're going to be doing business as usual as we were, you know, last week, or the, you know, the, the coming week. We, we have no idea whether we're going to be, you know, on that essential list, non-essential, does this thing get worse before it gets better? So I think there's a lot of definitely sort of unknowns. Yet at the same time, we're also seeing across the board, really, a lot of activity right now on the selling side. As you know, everything's going really fast. Typically, you know, we're seeing multiple offers like crazy, people selling, getting top bucks. So very interesting times, yet at the same point, there's some things that we know are really kind of important that agents should be doing when it comes to how they market themselves and listings in the marketplace. So one of the things that we really have recognized is that getting a seat at the table is really, really important right now, because we know that if you can get a seat at the table, and that table can be virtual in many cases, you know, to pick up the listing. That is one of the, the number one challenges is why, how do you earn that seat at the table? How do we get you some of the opportunity to pick up that listing? The traditional ways of marketing yourself as an agent have all changed. You know, you're, you look back at, you know, door knocking, for example, not happening right now with COVID, you know, networking out in public networking events and groups where you can go out and meet and hand out a business card, not happening. Cold calling, you know, we've got do not call lists in place, not happening. Open houses, a great way to meet people, not happening. So you've got all of these things happening at the same time, and it's really flipping how agents market themselves and get that seat at the table sort of on its head. And one of the things we're recognizing is that your online presence on social really has a dramatic impact on your ability to get that seat at the table. You need to be found. You need to be in people's thinking when they're thinking of selling. And how do you do that? There's many ways, as you know, but you know, you could take out a bus shelter ad, you can wrap a bus, you can send out postcard mailers, a lot of those traditional marketing methods, some of them still work. Yet if you look at the, the spend, the ROI against, you know, paying a couple thousand dollars a month for a billboard versus creating a piece of content and pushing that content out with a digital ad spend budget to get it into the phones of people or the screens of people who are at home, consuming more digital than ever on different platforms that they're on. It's like, there is no better way to get yourself out there than to play in that digital arena. So if you're not playing there, if you've relied solely on traditional, it's time to really step that up, because by doing that, it's, it is a huge driver for just general awareness. So when people are thinking, who is the agent in my area? Your name comes top of mind, because they've seen you consistently. When they go on Kijiji, when they go on YouTube, when they go on Facebook Marketplace, when they go on the Weather Network, your logo is there, your name is there. They see your video. There's constantly thinking of you for that particular neighborhood. So we know if we can help you get a seat at the table, it is huge. Second thing that's going on in real estate marketing right now is that we would say, and this is again, there's not, you know, the study is kind of just pulling a number out of what we anticipate, but really, we see like 90% of the agents are not executing. So why is this? I think there's a couple of reasons that stand out. One, a lot of agents don't know what to do, and that's totally fair. And at the end of the day, there's a lot to do. There's a lot that you could be doing. And we'll go into some of those in a few minutes. But what are the things that you could be executing on, that you should be executing on, that your competitors are executing on, that 10% are doing very, very well. The nice thing is it's equal playing field. Everybody has the opportunity to do it. Now it comes down to your commitment and accountability and actually doing it, actually executing on some of these strategies. And they're not hard, but you need to be consistent and you need to have a mindset that this is something that's really important to growing your business. We know that agents are marketers. At the end of the day, you are here to market the listings that you sell. And at the end of the day, people are going to be looking at, how can you market this listing, depending like, based on how you market yourself? If you market yourself really well, there's more confidence to be like, this is a person who can market my listing really well. And so it's really, really important for you to execute, to basically help get that seat at the table and get yourself to become one of those top 10% that are actually in the action of doing. Third, one of the things that we also know is, once you've got that seat at the table, having a killer listing presentation is also super important. And it used to be very much print. We would see this, this concept of getting the seat at the table as being a physical seat at a table. And that's changing in itself too. It's like, what is your ability to actually present your messaging and your, your value and your market positioning to someone who's looking to list? How well do you do that in a digital landscape where you can't physically be there? And there's a lot of tools to help with this, whether it is creating a video that summarizes the messaging, whether it is a digital portfolio that shows sort of the scope of everything that you can do. And as Sandra said, you know, photos are not enough. And they may be, we're kind of in this conflicted time right now, where you could say, like, Scott, you're crazy. I could shoot photos with my iPhone right now, post it up, and I'll still get offers and listing and, and, and activity on the listing. And you're absolutely right, because of the current time of where we are. However, you and every other agent have the ability to do that. So now, how do you differentiate? And I would suggest to all of you, this is a great time to double down on building out that listing presentation or portfolio. So you want to imagine yourself being in that physical table. There's three agents around the table, and they're all bidding for that same listing. They're all going to come at it with different ways. You're going to be competing with someone who's going to say, hey, when I market a listing, this is how I do it. We do a photo shoot, we do full video. I want to show the areas around in the neighborhood. I'm going to do a full 360. So if people aren't comfortable coming inside the listing, you know, we've got a solution for that. I'll generate your floor plans for you. And we're going to create beautiful twilight photos to really help this listing, you know, stand out. Maybe I'll create a piece of social media content that we can share or run as ads. These are things that some, many of our clients are offering. There are things that they, they put, it's like standard. Yeah, we do drone on every shoot. And sometimes, you know, there's cases where it's like, we kind of scratch our heads and go, do you really need drone shots on this listing? And maybe not. It's just a townhouse and a subdivision, but they want to show proximity to shopping, proximity to parks, recreation, the things that are really important right now when people are trying to get outside. So all that to be said is there, there is, this is a great opportunity for you, because you, you know that there's a very solid chance that that listing is going to sell, which means you're really, the, the risk of investing heavily in sort of the marketing work for the listing is really diminished. You know, you're going to end up with your commission. This house is, the listing's going to move. So use this opportunity not to back down on how you're, how you're, you know, marketing that property, but pour in. So that way, you're creating an awesome portfolio that you can use when it does become more competitive. Because the one thing we do know is the market can shift overnight. We can see very quickly, a lot of people getting word out that they're able to sell and get top dollar today for their, their property. That could change tomorrow. All of a sudden, we could be in a buyer situation where there's actually a flood of stuff on the market. And now you'll be really, really thankful that you have built a great presentation and you've got a strategy to help you get that seat at the table. I wanted to take a minute just to walk you through. And sorry, I should, before we advance here, I know Nathan had asked, put up his hand to ask a question, which was great. I know Sandra's going to be moderating this. If you do have some questions as we go, feel free to put them in the chat. But I will open up at the end. We'll, we'll come back kind of at the end of the presentation. I'd love to go through any questions that you have. We can talk about it in more detail at the end. So let me kind of get through the slides. Park your question if you can, just put it in the chat, raise your hand. We'll make sure that we address it kind of at the end of the presentation. That would be great. Here, I wanted to just talk a little bit about what's going on in the customer journey. So this is not specific to real estate. This is actually what's happening in 2021, when it comes to consumer activity and kind of the buying process or journey for a typical client. So you'll see there are five different elements in the client journey that are super important. And everybody on this call should have their eye on all five of these. So let's just go through them in order here. First, and there, there's an order of importance. We'll talk about that in a second. But the first one is awareness. We need to make sure that we're showing up in all kinds of different places. And I say, we, I'm actually referring to you. As an agent, you want to make sure that people know about you. Your awareness is everything. So when you look at it, well, how are we showing, how are you showing up on platforms like Facebook, like Twitter, like Instagram? How are you showing up when it comes to people seeing you again when they have visited your website? Do they see an ad banner on a, you know, on the Weather Network? Do they see you running a social media video or a listing video on YouTube? How is your general sort of awareness? And then you've got all of the, the both digital and I would say traditional marketing methods. They both work. There's no question. We are not suggesting fully move away from billboard displays, mailers. But if you're not playing in the digital game, you're actually leaving a huge amount of opportunity on the table. And the one thing that you do get with digital that you don't get with traditional means, yes, you can understand how many cars pass by a billboard every day. But what you don't get is you don't get the insight of how many people are actually engaging with your content. How many people have actually clicked on the link to learn more about you? How many people came over to your website? So we really want to make sure that you're focusing on awareness in both of those categories as best you can. And I would always suggest tie the two together. If you've got a billboard or you've got a bus, you know, bench or a bus ad, link it back to social, tie them all in together. Use a unique phone number on those ads, so that you can tell if that phone number was called, you know that that came from that bench or that ad set. So again, there's ways to tie the two together, but awareness is huge. It's critical. Second is findability. How easy is it for people to find you? So when people go on and search, which they're doing more than ever, they're going to different platforms, not just Google. They're going to places now like Alexa. They're going to places like Yelp for reviews. They're going to Yahoo. They're going to, they're going to voice dictation within their car. So they're looking for people in different ways. Now, we're perhaps a little bit of ahead of our time, but I would suggest that the majority of people here on this call are very familiar with looking for a service provider on Google. That's where you would go. So you look at, how are you when it comes to the findability when someone is searching best Realtor Toronto? Do you show up? Are you, are you present? If they're looking for someone in a specific neighborhood, and Toronto's very, very broad, you could say, you know, top Realtor in Leeside, very different. It's like, are you showing up on that? So we really want to make sure that on the search side, you can be found. Now, one of the things that's critical is that when you are found, the next step here is really looking at, what is your reputation show? What are people actually seeing? So when they come and they find you, what are they actually kind of taking in? Are they seeing like, wow, you're leading the way? You've got current blog articles on your website that are written about spring 2021? What is going on in Leeside in 2021 in real estate? Your current, you're providing great value. You've got reviews, you've got testimonials. There's a testimonial video that we're hearing from your clients explaining what you do. We're perhaps seeing a video of you where you're interacting with people and that reputation is being built. So really, this is a, this has changed a lot recently, because even in the light of COVID, when you think about it, I'm sure many of you on this call have probably ordered from Amazon or Wayfair or an online store more during COVID than you probably did pre-COVID. And one of the biggest things for shopping is looking at reviews. If you go on Wayfair and you're looking to buy a, a couch or a table, where do you look? You're probably the solid chance that you're looking to see, what are other people saying about this product? Amazon, same thing. It's all about the reviews. If there's negative reviews, the chances of the client moving forward are probably much slim. So you want to make sure that the reviews and that reputation are really, really solid. Now, we've got the person from awareness. They have heard about you. They've seen you. They went to look for you. They found you. They're there. They're checking you out. They're looking at the reputation. And now they're at a point where they're like, we need to, do I reach out to this person? Conversion. This is where they're now going to reach out and transact with you in the form of booking an appointment, filling out a lead form, chatting with you through a chat, sending you a text message, asking for a call back. There's a number of ways. You want, really want to make sure that your conversion capabilities online, when a customer arrives, is solid. There should be no barrier to somebody getting in touch with you. And I would suggest as a tip for all of you, have somebody go through your current website and literally just test the links and ask them, I want you to go on my website and I want you to reach out to me. How, how did you find it? What did you feel? Were you able to reach out with ease? Did my pictures and my marketing online, did it, did it convey who I am and what I, what I'm about? How do you feel my reputation was? Take the time to do that deep dive. It's a great time to do it. And it's super, super important. And lastly, the last piece is really, once they've converted, we really want to turn the people who've worked with you into raving fans, you know, really leverage that opportunity. So if you've got a client who had an amazing experience, you want that client to really share about that experience with you and, and become an advocate, get them to leave a review for you, get them to post on their social about you, get them to, in a testimonial video for you. I mean, there's so much low-hanging fruit with your existing client base. And when you have that opportunity where someone's like, thank you so much, the service was great. That is your time to have a strategy ready to be like, great, thank you for saying that. I wonder if you could do a Google review for me. I'm wondering if you could do a testimonial video. These are all things that add a lot of value. So when you look at the client journey in general, you really want to make sure all five of these areas are covered. But you really want to make sure, before you even start with the awareness, if you're going to go and start running ads, for example, to drive people to discover you and boost that awareness, you really want to make sure that you've got the reputation, the conversion piece locked down. Because if you're driving people to a site and they can't convert, or the reputation that they're seeing is not ideal, you've got to get that fixed first. And this is a great time to do that in a market where there's a lot of activity and a lot of new information and education that needs to be shared amongst people who are really looking for it. I want to talk a little bit about investing in video. And I think this is a big misnomer in the real estate industry, is a lot of people look at video as an expense. And I want you to change that thinking. That thinking has to shift to investment, because videos, if they're created right, can work for you for years. If you create a video that highlights who you are, you are the best agent in Leeside. I'm picking on Leeside for no particular reason, but you're the best agent there. That video can work for years. Go and search Little Italy, Toronto, and you will see the Bosley Real Estate team pumped out a video nine years ago, all about Little Italy in Toronto. That video is the number one video on YouTube about Little Italy in Toronto. And it's, Bosley hasn't touched it in nine years. But they did it nine years ago. They posted it. They indexed it properly. They wrote a great description. They tagged it. And you could imagine, in the first month, maybe it was on the third page of YouTube. The third year, probably on the first page. Now it's the number one video. So it's a great example of how, when you do video right, to promote yourself, to promote your listings, that content works for you for years. You could create a piece of content about, you know, Leeside, and you could decide, I'm going to run ads. I want to run ads now for the next two months to build my business. And you turn the ads off. And then next winter, next spring, turn that same ad set on and run that video again. Doesn't necessarily need to be reshot. You could shoot four videos in a year and have them all seasonal, Leeside, spring, summer, fall, and winter. Run that ad set each quarter. Next year, run through them again. They don't go bad. So if they're, if now hairstyles change, people change, the areas change, but you could get a few years of activity out of it. And so for the cost of producing a great video and running ads against it compared to a month of a billboard ad, for example, they're night and day comparisons. The data you get back is huge. You have the ability, if you can imagine, just follow me for a second. Run a video, Leeside, best agent Leeside, things, five things you need to know about Leeside in the summer, Leeside tips, whatever it is, run that video. Everybody who watches that video leaves behind a digital footprint. The digital footprint allows you to remarket to that person, even if that person has not reached out to you. They didn't fill out their form. It's not a lead gen activity. They saw your video. They were like, they watched it. They never reached out to you. But then they went on the Weather Network. They were like, they watched it, they'd never reached out to you, but then they went on the weather network the following week and they saw your display ad. And then they clicked on the ad and then they discovered you again. And maybe then they fill out a form, but maybe not. Maybe they then went on Kijiji and they saw you again. And it's like, all of a sudden you've become the agent in Lee Side. And I'm telling you, we talked about 90% of agents not executing, this is huge. This is a huge opportunity for you to become that 10% that are actually doing the execution and our jobs to help you do that. We suggest that every business should have a, what we call a core four set of videos. One is your hero video. This is the video that sums you up in two minutes. Who are you? Why are you the best? What do you specialize in? Why do people like working with you? There's a hint of client testimonial in there, but it is a video that is front and center. It's on your, it's on your website, it's in your email signature. It is, uh, on your social pages is the first video people see when they get to your YouTube channel. It is front and center for you. Second one is a testimonial video. If you do not have a testimonial video from your clients, you need one for sure. Because people, as much as you say, hey, I am great, I am Lee Side's best Realtor, hearing it from other people is even more powerful. And please, 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 please do not ever, ever pay for actors to do your testimonial videos. If you don't have anybody, you're brand new to the industry and you haven't transacted yet, that's okay. Find people who can speak to your character. You know, you can imagine if someone said, oh, Jen is an amazing person. I've always loved her, her, her style is friendly and open and I know she's a hard worker and I would have absolutely no problem recommending Jen to any of my friends or family. Jen's never transacted, uh, they're brand new to real estate. But that testimony you just heard is enough to solidify for other people that this person is worth reaching out to. The intro and outro sequence, this is really important for consistency. So what we get at here is when you have a listing and we create a video for your listing, that there's an opening and out, like an intro and outro sequence. This is where you, we've put together a, a montage that's consistent in every video. So when the video opens, it's like, wow, that's the same brand. This person's professional. This person takes this business seriously. It's huge. And secondly, you definitely need a couple of digital ads, videos that are designed for ad platforms. They're short, 15 and 30 seconds, 15 seconds is important because if you go to YouTube and you're typing in, you know, best recipes for making lasagna, you could be seeing an ad for the agent before that video plays. This is where you see the skip ad button in the bottom, but in many cases, if the video is created right, people are watching it because hey, they're like, that's my neighborhood. I'm looking to make lasagna in Lee Side, but here I am and this agent's talking about my neighborhood. I'll watch that. Oh, you watched 50% of the video? Great. You left a digital footprint. We'll retarget you, you'll see this brand again. So we can tie the whole thing together. So I know it sounds like a lot, but I just want you, if I can leave you with anything, shift your thinking on marketing uh, as a marketing expense on video to an investment in video because they do not go bad. Listings also huge investments, not expenses. A lot of people, a lot of agents, we hear all the time, they're like, how much do you charge for listings? And they're like, I want to pay as little as possible because you know, this listing, you know, it only needs photos. It's like lost opportunity. We have agents that can tell you who are, um, the top performers in our organization. They move the most volume, who literally do everything on every listing and they sell on that. They will literally come in and like, this is how we market. We do photo, video, drone, 360 on everything. We don't care if it's a thousand, one bedroom, a thousand square foot, one bedroom condo. They will do twilight photos and drone on that condo building. And they do it for a reason because nobody else in the condo tower markets that way. And if they run that content or they get a, they get a seat at the table with somebody else in the building. They've got an amazing portfolio to show. So if nothing else, it's a great way, if you're looking to crack into the business, lead the way on how you market the listing, thinking about picking up the next one, not about selling the one that you currently have. Trends that are working. So just quickly, some things that we're seeing right now in real time today that are really working and moving the needle. Instagram's still a huge platform. If you're not on it, you need to be. You want to be showing up authentically on this platform. People do not want to see just pictures of houses. They don't want to see pictures of this listing here, this listing sold, listing this, listing that. They want to see you walking your dog. They want to know about, you know, your favorite type of spaghetti sauce. They want to get to know you. They want to know what you order on Starbucks. They want to know about your kid's first day back to school. Everybody has a phone. In the phone, there are cameras. You do not need us to be creating and pumping out content. Content is all around you. I've always told people that you can create content out of anything. If you look at your desk right now and I'm just going to pick, there's a pair of scissors on this desk. It's like, how could I create a piece of content about these scissors? You know, like just randomly picking something. You could, right? It's like cutting through, slicing, cutting, I don't know. There's like, do a play on words. There's a bunch of different things you can do. And as ridiculous as it sounds, sometimes that is the content that actually engages people the most, that they actually want to see. People love that authenticity. So please do not hide behind your listings, do not make it all about business. Instagram reels and stories are blowing up. So just quickly, TikTok, as many of you know, has come into the social media landscape, typically a younger crowd is consuming it, very video heavy profile, very short snippets. In response, Instagram has really pushed their Instagram reels because they want to compete with TikTok, which basically means the more Instagram reels you are creating, which are short videos. Imagine you're going out on, um, you're going out to do showings. Start documenting, do a little document of your journey, picking up your purse, putting it in the car. You can imagine so on the app, you can just film a little one second clip, getting in the car, getting out of the car, going into the house, coming out of the house, going back, it stitches it all together, put it to music, it's all built in the app. Post, Instagram will reward you because they want to compete with TikTok to get eyes on reels. So reels and stories, the behind the scenes stuff, hugely, hugely valuable. Virtual open houses, as you know, open houses are, have changed. The virtual open house is a whole new way of showing a property. Don't be afraid to talk about it. Talk room by room, create five pieces of content instead of one. A lot of agents feel sometimes they have to get this perfect script. They have to get it so perfect before it goes out. You could do five pieces. Hey, here I am at 123 Main Street. I'm standing in the kitchen. This kitchen is gorgeous. It has pot lights, it's got a sink, awesome, whatever, right? It's like, great, that's a piece. Then go to the garage, talk about the garage, talk about the laundry room, talk about the master, talk about, do them all in little segments, release one a day. Tons of content, people are following you. And most importantly, the, when you, if you're familiar with Instagram, when you go on, there's little circles at the top. Those are the stories and they're in order of the most recent posts, which means the more you post, the more frequent you're in the top, the more frequent you're in the top, the more frequent people see your name, your logo every time they open Instagram. So the more that you can be pumping out story content, the better. But use your, use that virtual open house as an opportunity to create reels, to create stories, to create content around that listing. YouTube ads in local areas, low hanging fruit, nobody does this. I think it is like game changer. If I was an agent, I would come out of the gate and I would do this absolutely on every single listing. So I want you to think, when was the last time that you went and you looked up a video on YouTube about anything? You searched up motocross or whatever you're into. And you, when was the last time you saw an ad come on before that video? That was of an agent in your neighborhood talking about the listing that they're selling? Probably never. I know I have never seen, I've seen a couple of times where people have run a, an ad about their brand, but I've never seen it where it's like, hey, that's down the street from me. That house, I know that house, I'm not looking to move, but I'm looking at that house and I'm like, I know that area. And interesting, that agent who's running the ad to me is marketing better than any other agent I've ever seen because I've never seen ads run to me like that in my local neighborhood. Why is that? Typically agents don't know what to do. But I, I, I am, I will, I am so confident in that strategy that if you ran a YouTube ad in the neighborhood where you're selling a listing and it can just be like, hey, really excited to put this house in the market, it's coming soon. Really excited that this house sold, whatever it is, run that in the neighborhood. There is somebody there who will think of you as being that person who was first to market to advertise to you in the local neighborhood. So a huge strategy if you can use it, 360 Matterport, 360 has been game changing since COVID. In many cases, sellers are on the fence about should I list? Is this a good time? I don't want people coming through my house. I've got vulnerable people living here. My kids are here. I don't want the exposure. I want to know who's coming through. 360 gives the seller peace of mind, but it also gives you competitive advantage to be able to say, hey, this is what we're doing in COVID. In light of COVID, of not having as many showings, I can show you showing data on how many people have seen the 360 tour. And we're going to consider a 360 tour viewing as an actual showing. So now you've got stats you can report back to the seller that say, hey, did you know since we did the 360, a thousand people have been through the 360? Wow, okay. So we are getting traction on this list and they are seeing action. And again, it's a great way for you to kind of be current. You've got a solution to COVID. You're putting your seller's mind at ease. You've got a solution for buyers so that they're not wasting your time. They can literally see it before they come out. And I will caution, there are a lot of people out there who are not comfortable with 360. They feel it's cumbersome. They understand like, they're like, I get spun around, I, you know, it's, I gotta click here, I gotta, I gotta click all over the place. I'm not really sure what I'm, uh, what I'm doing. I don't find it easy. That's why a video is also necessary. A video is simple because you can hit the play button. Everyone knows that triangular YouTube button, you know what to do. You hit the play button, you sit back, you can be taken into a two minute emotional experience and you're good to go. And I will suggest if you are doing, uh, videos for your listings, it is imperative. Like to me, no question, if I had to give you one tip of nothing, do nothing else. Be in your listing video. And it can be as simple as saying, hi, I'm Jen, welcome to 123 Main Street. You're going to love this house. Come on inside. That's it. The reason you need to be in that video is because there is a brand awareness play for you by being in that video. Will it help that listing sell more? Probably not. But if the seller's takes that video and they share it with all of their network on Instagram and Facebook, people will watch it because they know the seller. They're like, hey, that's so and so's house. They're obviously on the move. Oh, I'm going to watch their video because I'm a nosy neighbor. I want to see inside their house. I want to see this video. Who do they discover? As a result, they discovered Jen, the agent. And if Jen, the agent shows up in the video, even if it's for a split second and seems friendly and approachable and knowledgeable and that video is well put together, the chances that somebody who's watching the video is thinking about selling, reaches out to their friend and says, hey, I see your listing. I like the look of that video. Your agent seems interesting. Can I get his or her contact information? Next thing you know, you've got a listing on the way and all it took was for you to have the bravery and the courage to be in the video. So no matter how nervous you are, and I know people are nervous all the time. They're like, I hate being in video at all, I'm good on camera, I can't get my haircut, my roots are growing, or whatever it is. It's like, don't worry about it. At the end of the day, if you knew that you could pick up another listing because you took 60 seconds to be in that video in the beginning, would you do it? Probably. So highly, highly encourage you to do it. Five, virtual staging. Physical staging, as you all know, very expensive, amazing for listings. Do not get me wrong. We love when homes are physically staged. They market way better. As you know, I don't need to get into the benefits of physical staging. However, in a COVID time, physical staging may not make as much sense as it did pre-COVID. Virtual is huge. This is our ability to come in, remove furniture, add furniture, add decor elements. We can change as many things as you need. Typically, we will only deal with decor elements so that we're compliant. We do encourage agents to make sure that they are telling people on those photos that these are renderings of what it could potentially look like. But a great way again to build your portfolio, provide a, a great marketing experience for your seller at a fraction of the cost and then market that as part of your service of what you do differently from your competitors. Google reviews, I cannot speak enough about. Please just remember that, uh, Google basically owns search at the end of the day. Set a goal for yourself. Become the agent in your area who has the most Google reviews out of any of your competitors. Uh, and run that up the flagpole. Google will like you for it. They will feed your, uh, website more when people are searching. They will like you better on YouTube because, uh, Google owns YouTube. So tons of connectivity there. Facebook, uh, groups, again, a great strategy we're seeing working right now really well for agents. If there is a neighborhood group in Lee Side, you want to be in it. If there isn't one, create one, be the organizer of that group, invite people in Lee Side to join it. Do not make it spammy. It is not about, uh, you know, showing who you are and really, you know, waving your flag as an agent. This is about providing neighborhood value. Hey, did you know the owner down the street is, you know, a great small business and they need your support? Do a profile on them, tag them, they end up in the group. Next thing you know, you're in the group, you'll, you become the person talking about real estate in Lee Side. You can advertise to people in the group. They can see your video, they can connect those dots. So hugely valuable. And lastly, Clubhouse, this is an app you should all be on. I think it was touted a lot at the Buzz Conference. For those of you who joined, you aren't on Clubhouse yet, it's time to download that app and check it out. A great way for you to have audio discussions with people about, um, anything, real estate or anything about the neighborhood. So definitely kind of a trending app that is on the rise. Lastly, as we wrap up the presentation today, I wanted to let you know that one of the things that we do for our clients, typically we, we do charge for it, but I'm happy to do if you are interested is we can provide what's considered a digital snapshot. So we can take a look through the eyes of Google of how you are showing up online. It's a service that we can provide to you. So if you are interested, um, please don't hesitate to reach out and let us know. We can run the report and it will show you some really interesting things. It'll take a look at how you're comparing against some of your competitors. It'll show how you're showing up on, uh, for keyword searching and will show, um, how you are doing when it comes to reviews. We can provide some marketing recommendations to you. This is something that we're happy to do for all of you who are on the call today as part of a takeaway to help you really explode in 2021. So if you need some help there, please know, we're happy to provide that at no cost to you. Sandra has provided us with a list of contacts, which is great. So hopefully we'll stay connected. But if you are interested, please don't hesitate to reach out, uh, to us. And with that, uh, here we are on the last slide. I want to just thank you again very much for, uh, for your time today. I hope you found the, uh, presentation to be interesting and worthwhile. And hopefully you got some nuggets out of it, some nuggets of information. And I, I'm happy to kind of open up the lines here or take some questions as people, uh, are here. So Sandra, maybe I'll turn it back over to you and you can moderate these questions as they're coming in.
Yeah, this was, um, uh, huge. This was like a whole bunch of really great information in 46 minutes, which was so awesome. One question that I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit more on was, uh, Mary in the Q and A box asked, to get started in online marketing in some capacity, what do you recommend as like a, a, just a beginner's budget, just to get started? What, what do they need?
So I think there's two ways to look at digital marketing. You can do a lot of it for free. There's a great resource called google.com that can show you kind of how to do anything you're looking to do. There's also some really great courses right now coming out of LinkedIn. If you're on LinkedIn, uh, there's an app called LinkedIn Learning and you can look up kind of what, you know, what to do there. The reason I'm defaulting to kind of this idea of sort of an organic approach to digital versus a paid approach is that I think both are available to you. So if we look and kind of go like, what do you need first and foremost? You need to look at those five things on the client journey and really ask yourself, how are we doing in all of those five? So how are we doing on awareness? Where are you showing up? Do you have a Facebook page? Do you have a Google My Business page? Hugely valuable. You're starting any business or you're an agent. You want to basically see when you type in your name, that on the right hand side of the Google search results, a business page is showing up with a link to your website, photos of you, your reviews are all there. So if you don't have a Google Business Page, that to me is like, uh, it's like having a phone number. If you don't have a phone number for your business, you're, you're, you're losing out before you even start. A solid website, again, you want to think about what is the website there to do? Websites are very much there to, um, to help that person with the conversion, but also to showcase that reputation. So it's not necessarily just a lead gen magnet. It really should be there as an opportunity to show what do you do differently? What makes you unique? Why should I reach out to you? So having a solid website where people are getting that information, having great reviews, getting the, uh, the awareness play, making sure that when people are searching for you, they can find you. All those things can be done relatively inexpensive. So when I think like the website, yeah, you, you need to spend some money on building out a website, there's no question. But setting up a Facebook page, no. Getting a Google My Business Page set up, no cost, just need to go through the process to get it done. Getting the reviews, no cost. Getting the reviews, no cost, your phone, I mean, you create an Instagram account, start using your device to create the content, post it. But if you were to ask me like, what do you need in terms of a budget to really do? If you really want to grow your, your business, you need to be spending probably around twenty five hundred dollars a month is what I'm going to suggest, ongoing at minimum, to really give this thing a solid push. And the other piece of that though, I want to just be cautious that you understand where I'm coming from with this. There's a lot of work here, posting consistently on social, keeping the reviews up, building a great website, making sure you're converting, making sure that you're retargeting and not losing the people who are coming through, making sure you've got tracking data on the site, um, keeping up with, you know, this latest social media, all of this stuff, you know, creating video content, it's all that comes to cost, a lot of it you can do yourself. But it depends if, like, do you want to spend your time there or do you want to spend your time? Like I look at like someone like Tom's story, like great, like Tom films these amazing videos at home with his camera. It's nothing overly elaborate, but he's consistent, he's executing, he's actually doing the do. Um, and it works, the other key to that is it works over time. So I think it's really important people understand, it's like a digital marketing strategy is built over a period of time. You've got to roll it out and you get better every month, you stick around. Same thing with ads, if you want to run ads, yeah, you could throw an ad spend budget at what you're doing. That is a couple hundred dollars a month, five hundred dollars a month. Your results are probably not going to be as great as if you spend two thousand dollars a month on ads, but you need to start, you need to stay committed to it. And we're in like, as a great example, I mean, we run a budget, we run a five thousand dollar digital ad budget for OTBX in Toronto. And it took us, I would say a solid year to rank up there, we didn't start there, but we grew there. And we grew there because we were able to figure out how to make it ROI positive, meaning the return on that investment pays us back. So we know, we can basically spend five thousand and, and onboard new clients who spend more than five. And as long as they're spending more than five, our awareness is in play and we're recruiting new agents. I will say, one of the things that we do provide is a marketing strategy for agents, it is the foundation of getting started. We do not take on any clients for digital marketing services without a strategy. The strategy, we typically charge three thousand dollars for the strategy, uh, but it's an amazing tool. Whether you work with us or not, you can use it on your own, but we'll identify what should you be doing? Where are the gaps? How are you showing up? You know, how do you, how do you stand out from your competitors? Who are your directors? So we really give you kind of a, a toolkit of like, go and do these things consistently and you'll get there and it works really, really well. So it's a, that's a loaded question Sandra from Mary about like, what is the, the right amount? I, I would say if you had five hundred dollars, we could start small, but be smart with where you spend it, you know? I think you are muted.
Thank you, uh, I think the key takeaway that I really would love for everybody to, to take away from this is that it, it, you know, what you were talking about dovetailing and making sure that everything sort of talks to each other and, and, and goes back to each other. Oftentimes I've got Realtors that come to me and say, you know, what does it cost to take a billboard out? I'm gonna get a billboard and that's gonna be like amazing, it's like putting your face on the front page of the newspaper, it's gonna just drive leads into my business like crazy and that's not how it works, right? Like it's a, it's a long-term ongoing, you know, making sure that you're always staying in front of people in all these different ways and some of them are subconscious and passive and some of them are right in their face. So I, I think that what people should not be doing is, you know, going out and spending fifteen hundred bucks with you guys to do like an epic branding video and then doing nothing else. Because that's the same as getting a gigantic billboard at the corner of Winston Churchill and Lake Shore and then never doing anything else and hoping that that's gonna make you a million dollars GCI at the end of the year, right? So I think that that's a really big key that you said. Now, there's a couple of other questions and I really want to get through them so that we can tie up around two o'clock. First of all is, um, do you have a cost list on your website of, uh, Robin has asked, what's the ballpark figure of like the full gamut for listing product production that OTBX does?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, Robin, so thanks for asking, we actually have a price guide which I'll share here with you. This is a guide that we've put together for twenty twenty one that basically showcases sort of all of our services and what we do, everything that we do, we typically have packages that kind of range in price. But our packages are really recommendations for our clients, so if we need to make something à la carte, we can certainly do that. So we try to have what we call good, better and best, basically different levels of packages, whether you're looking to do photo, video, drone, I think in your question you're asking like the whole, uh, enchilada, if you will, of like what does it cost? So a lot of variables there in terms of, um, costing, because it depends a little bit on size of the property. But typically for what you've described, if we're looking at, you know, the full thing with photo, video, drone, twilight, probably around a thousand dollars for a typical home, um, to do, to pull all of that work off and that's like a full meal deal. But again, I don't, I want you to, you've got to shift your focus on that because I will tell you, there are competitors of yours who are doing that. They're spending it, we did a home the other day for an agent, Royal Page agent in Toronto, she had a luxury home in North York and the, it was eighteen hundred dollars she spent on listing it, didn't bat an eye. She's like, I, I know, I'm gonna get my commission and I need to market this thing right and I need it for my future portfolio in this market. And it works, so, um, don't just, uh, my only encouragement, don't look at it as this expense. A lot of people look at this like, how do I drive that cost down? It's like, this is one of the best things you can do is to pour into listing marketing to grow your business. So I'm happy to share this Sandra, it's actually on our website as well under our real estate section. Um, there's a full updated guide, all of the pricing is kind of listed there for you. If anybody needs it, I'm happy to kind of share this with you and it goes into everything, so we talk about our, um, you know, everything from headshots to doing luxury homes, different, the core four that we do, our digital marketing strategy work, that kind of thing, so it's all there and available online if people have, uh, any questions as well.
Okay, I've got three more questions and then, uh, we can tie it up. And I know that I can invite anybody that was on this presentation to connect with you and your team for, you know, more detailed answers. Uh, I would just want to jump back to Bruce's question, who's just wants a refresher on the four core videos, if you wouldn't mind, because he missed, uh, number three and four and he was interested.
That's okay, yeah, terrific, so, uh, the, the core four, so we definitely have the hero video, we've got a testimonial video, we're hearing from your clients. Uh, we have one that is what we consider to be an intro and outro. The intro and outro is basically imagine a, uh, you'll quite often see these on, uh, vlog style videos. So imagine, hi, I'm, uh, Bruce and in today's video, I'm gonna introduce you to one, two, three Main Street. You're gonna love this house and then video times out, we see the intro, it's kind of the collage of Bruce. It's like Bruce selling real estate, Bruce shaking hands, kissing babies, Royal Page, the whole thing brought together. Then he comes back, Bruce is inside, so we're inside one, two, three Main Street. The reason you want that intro piece is because it's consistent in all of your videos. And it shows and people watch it, they're like, wow, this guy is serious about his business, he's got like an intro clip and at the end it's the same thing, for more information, the book is showing, give me a call, I'm Bruce. Branded ending, it's the same thing, we can use, it's a different ending, but we think it's really important to have this and we're seeing a lot of agents that are really wanting this work done. And then the last one is the ads, so we also create two ads for you, kind of a short and a long. And those are for different purposes, so some of the ads we can run longer time, some of them shorter time. Uh, so we will always create two digital ad sets that are very generic, they're kind of timeless, we call them evergreen in the sense that they're non-seasonal, you can run them anytime and they, you use them for that brand awareness play. So combine all of those four, the intro, outro, two ads, uh, testimonial and the hero video, you combine it, that makes up sort of the core four, if you will.
That's, that's, yeah, that's a home run for sure. Lisa Graham has some questions about testimonials, is it reasonable for her to sort of record her own? I mean, without having professional lighting and professional videography and then send you guys the clips and have you guys put something together?
Yeah, it's a good question, um, yeah, thanks for that question. So yes, um, COVID is giving you a pass, you are in a very interesting time because everybody's expecting you to be at home. They're not expect, they're not going like, I can't believe Sandra did the call from her home with the cat post in the background. Like they're like, no, it's COVID, that's how it is. So because you've got that pass, you can actually leverage it to not necessarily have us come in to create, you know, professionally shot, professionally lit content, create it. If you had to ask me, what's more important, quantity or quality? I will err on the side of quantity, you want to be pumping out content and quality is so subjective. At the end of the day, you're like, I look terrible in that video, my hair is blowing in the wind. And other people are like, I didn't even notice your hair, it looked amazing, that video was great. If you didn't put the video out, nobody saw it, the other people did. So I would say if, if you had to ask me, yes, pump it out. Now with testimonials, typically you're not going to come to a testimonial client twice. You kind of have one shot to be like, can I count on you for a testimonial? Yeah, I'd love to do that, great. Do it right, because you've got that one person and if you make them feel super special in that moment, again, like tons of leverage, like use that opportunity, hey, we brought in the film crew, we're filming this testimonial. Great, that's behind the scenes footage for you and for them. Get them to post behind the scenes footage in their story, what happens? People discover you, the agent in behind the scene, they see that you're invested in your clients, how many other Realtors are doing it? Not a lot, so yes, is there a nice mix of both? Absolutely, like, yes, put your clients on a Zoom webinar, record the screen, send it to us, we can put some music, intro, outro, opening to it, you've got something nice. But if you want to do a piece that's gonna work for you for the next three years, front and center on your website and shows you're pro in the game, have it done right.
And Lisa, further to your last question, um, you know, having it done professionally, what I've seen some Realtors do is have an, a client appreciation afternoon where you come, you have a, you know, a glass of cider and you pick up a pumpkin pie to take it home and while you're there, there's a studio that OTBX would have set up, like they'll be there for a few hours, they'll have comfy chairs and the proper lighting and then they'll bring, you know, your clients in and have them sit down for thirty seconds and, you know, ask a couple of quick questions. So there is that possibility too, to wrap that up into some kind of client appreciation, of course, you know, post COVID when it's safe to do so. So definitely some really good ideas there. Scott, I have two more questions for you, one is, I was speaking with a Realtor recently who was really struggling to get her Google Business, My Business page set up. And when she did, she found that a couple of, you know, haters, which we all have, we all have haters, um, sort of jumped in, you know, and, and, and kind of ruined the experience, you know, really quickly. And, and, you know, it can be kind of confusing to set up a Google My Business page. So, you know, do you have any recommendations around, you know, maybe potential companies that can help set it up and what to do with haters and that kind of thing, can you speak to that?
Yeah, it's a good question, so you found the company that can help you set it up. We're here, happy to help and we can take on, you know, I talked a lot about a lot of bigger strategy macro level things, but if there are small elements that you need, I need help getting more reviews, I need help getting my Google My Business set up, I need help with blog writing, I need help with my website, if you just need bits and pieces, that's fine, but what we do like to have is the entire strategy, so yes, we can definitely help you with that. The Google My Business is worth the effort, so if it takes effort to get it right, invest that time. Haters in the sense of like a bad review, you just need to find, like, if you put your mind, I always love this analogy. It's like, if I told you like, this is terrible to say, but like, you're gonna die, you're gonna die tomorrow at noon if you don't have fifty five star reviews on Google, you got till noon. You would get it, you would get it done, you could find it, like, message me, I'll leave you one right now, you're one ahead, right? So it's like, just, it's, it's, a lot of it is mindset and like, yes, you're gonna have those setbacks. You're gonna see, I posted this great YouTube video and some creeper commented on it and was like, I would never pay a million dollars for that house. That agent is overpriced, that they don't know what they're doing, what do you do? Do you stop? No, let's pump it out, just keep pushing, it's like, it happens, um, uh, same thing with like watching your own content. Do not watch your own videos, watch it once, trust somebody, like somebody that you trust in your family, can you please watch this? Tell me if it's, you think it's good, yeah, it's great, okay, post it, never watch it again. Because you're gonna be the most critical on yourself, you'll be like, oh, my voice doesn't sound, my hair, this, that. It's like, don't get in your own way, so.
That's what, that's what I said in March, when, when everybody was like starting to adapt and, and shift and they're like, oh no, now I have to do virtual open houses for my, for my listings and I, and, and people were recording it and then watching it and then recording it and like five hours later, they're still recording the same open house again. And I'm like, don't even record it, go live, because then you can't take it back and you're forced to put it out there.
People love the live stuff, that's the part they love the most, it's when you um and ah and your hair blows or something falls over, it's like, you're just real, it's like, be real.
Yeah, um, okay, so lastly, what I want to do is, this is absolutely amazing, Scott, thank you. There's gonna be a ton of people, uh, reaching out to you for assistance and help. So I, I'm definitely very glad for you to have that offering to everybody, to give them that sort of audit and suggestion of what they can do moving forwards, we'll give you everybody's contact info. Uh, lastly, what I'd love for you to do is drop in the chat, how people can connect with your organization. So the website we know is OTBX Air, if you want to type that into the chat and then any email address or phone number that they can call to reach you and/or your team. While Scott's doing that, I just want to tell you guys again, I've been working with Scott and his team for at least the last four years. I don't know exactly how long it's been, but it's been at least four years. Uh, Scott, Justin, Devin, like there is some incredible people that work at this organization that truly do embody their name of thinking outside the box and they have an understanding of real estate marketing well beyond what the vast majority of companies do out there. And I can't, I can't recommend this organization enough for their capabilities, they're absolutely amazing, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, no, it's been my absolute pleasure to be on today and I, again, I, I hope you got some value from the presentation. We, um, you know, it's always tricky because we try to not commit as, via sales pitch, but at the end of the day, I want to give you lots of nuggets, make sure you understand who we are and what we do and that, just know that we're here to help. So thanks Sandra for having us on, I, um, and again, so nice to see so many people on the call today, it's been great.
Yeah, you got it, we'll have you back again very soon. If you guys have any topics that you want Scott to, to focus on specifically for future events, let us know and we're happy to bring Scott back however often you guys want him. In the meantime, this has been recorded and we'll make sure that this goes out to everybody, including the contact information. And Scott, thank you again for your offering for everybody, I think that's gonna come in real handy for the vast majority of our Realtors looking to pivot. So again, thank you guys very much, it was lovely to have you all in today, Scott, can't thank you enough, thank you very much. Everybody, enjoy your Tuesday, take care, bye.